Let's open tonight's meeting. We're a few minutes late, we're waiting for members to show up. I think most people realize that the zoning board normally has five members and several associate members. Tonight, apparently, we have only four, which means that for each of the three hearings that we will engage in tonight, each will be given an option to either engage in the hearing tonight or to open it and then continue till next month when we have a fifth member. And the reason for that is because in order for a petition to be passed or denied requires a supermajority, which means four votes. So with a full board, a full zoning board, you could have one person oppose and four in favor, and that vote would carry. But if we only have four members, then you need a unanimous vote. And so there's a slight disadvantage or a slight risk to petitioners when that happens. Before we get going, I want to announce that I'm making an audio recording. Kathy is making an audio recording. Lake Kim is recording tonight's meeting. And I need to ask if anybody here is making a recording. Seeing none, thank you. So before we get going, hoping that we can wait a few more minutes and we'll have a fifth member come in, maybe we can take a few minutes to review the minutes from last meeting.
Yeah, they were very long. Sorry. But they were very, I read them. They were good. Kathy writes excellent comments.
Do you guys get to just look at the minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Any revisions, comments, amendments, changes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of, well, these are the June 21st?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 21st as written.
Okay. Okay, I'll second it.
And who seconded?
I did.
Dave made the motion, Joe has seconded, and any further discussion on the minutes from June 21st? They are pretty long.
I thought it was a long meeting.
Couple of trees here.
Yeah.
That was a four-hour meeting.
Drinking coffee with that one.
No changes in the minutes, all in favor of accepting the motion to approve?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Thank you. Tonight, we have three hearings. We're gonna reopen the Cheney hearing, did I pronounce that right? Cheney hearing. And then we'll follow with the Lemlin, and then the Johnson hearing when we're done with Cheney. So we can reopen now, it is ten past seven. You understood what I said about only four members, so you have the choice to continue tonight or to ask for a continuance, which means we put it off until next month when we hopefully have a full board.
Well, I'll continue tonight.
Okay. Now, when we left it last month, we were expressing some reservations about your request for the position of the garage, because it intruded into the setback, and yet you have, if anything, an oversized lot.
Yep.
And you have some new information for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you help?
Sure. Yep. We try to be informal.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what, tell us what your latest version of the plan is.
All right. What we've done is we made the building smaller by 50 feet, we said 55, the length. And the width stood the same at the 24, but if you look at the measurements now, we came and we asked for 10 feet off the property line. Now, we're asking for 17 feet off the property line. And the reason why is if you look on that measurement from the house to the garage, it's only 10 feet.
Yep.
If we go, that'll allow me, if I need to get anything in there, to get, like, a machine in there to get to the septic tank or the leachion field, that is, will be an access to get through there enough space.
Why did you shorten it from 55 to 50?
Well, as long as I can get my sports car, my other car, and the other side, because what happens is too, the way, where we left it where it was, as it gets down to the back, the wind drops, and this would be bringing in a lot more, has a bringing in a lot more fill, because it starts to drop a lot, and it's probably about 18 inches of drop.
Off the rear of the garage?
Off the rear of the garage, yes, sir.
So you shortened it to avoid the problem of having to bring in the fill? Not, nothing going on?
Well, the fill, as long as I can get my two cars on one side and have, like, or be able to put one side by side, but more, just as long as I can get two cars front and back and have the area just to do my work, then I'm good. And it helps on the cars, too.
And you brought us a letter dated February 15th from your neighbor, I assume?
Yes, that, well, I didn't get it up to date, but I figured that would be good, because he said he was fine with it.
Mr. Motta says, "I, Thomas Motta, do not have an objection to County Cheney, 153 County, for the special permit for the garage no closer than 10 feet from the right property line." Is he the property owner next to where?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, we're only going seven feet.
Mr. Motta here? Is Mr. Motta here tonight?
No, he's not. He couldn't, he has, he's got children, they're doing something at a school tonight, only there he is, they're good. And then I just, the second drawing you look, it just shows all the stuff. I just kind of marked showing how the land is already, you could do, set all this plenty of space. It just kind of shows everything that's going around the house. And in the front, if you look on this drawing, this is from the town, it says there's no wetlands. And the last time I was here, you said there was wetlands, and then I went, actually. So I'm kind of still up in the air on that, of is there wetlands or is there not wetlands? Because you guys said there was, and...
Don, may I say something?
The wetlands are kind of, if you look, it's up in the front, because I was kind of going, if there is, because remember you?
Yeah. Yes, this applicant came into the department, and I did look up, I couldn't find any wetlands, although I drive by this property almost every day. And from what I see, the wetland, or where it does get wet, maybe because of the grade of the land, is right where he drew that circle. It gets wet up towards the front. I think he probably, he didn't say it, but I know I was objecting to the size of the garage, which was 55 feet, now he's made it 50. I think some of the objections were the neighbors, but the neighbors do not oppose it. The neighbors are, there's no objection there.
Well, the one next to the property line?
No, both of them.
Just gentlemen here?
The other gentlemen's here.
Right.
So both, on both property lines?
I think the one I'd be concerned about would be the one closest to this property line, but he's written us and said that he doesn't object.
So another point I'd like to make is, not only did he kind of take our considerations and downsize the garage, but as I rode by today, today, I looked around the neighborhood, and this gentleman is right across from Lakeville Storage. And I don't see where it's a detriment to the neighborhood at all. He actually has to look at Lakeville Storage, which Mr. Markson is not doing anything wrong, but he does have quite a bit of things on display.
Stuff.
Yes.
Yes, he has stuff.
So it's more of this applicant has to look at his stuff than anybody else. My opinion is where the neighbors do not object. I think I'd be in favor of this.
Good. Thank you. Gentlemen?
I think where he extended it to the 17 feet, I'm much more comfortable with that.
Much less uncomfortable.
Yeah, right.
I'm the same way. I think where you extended it makes all the difference, and the letter from the neighbor, that...
A comment on the wetland thing.
What was that, sir?
A comment on the wetland issue. Wetlands are legally defined, so you may have land that is wet, but may not be considered wetland.
Right.
You may have some places where you walk out and it's soggy and it's muddy, and you know, there's a puddle, but it may not be legally defined as wetlands. When you, if you have true wetlands, then it has to be treated a certain way, and you have to be careful of it.
I know it gets wet, because I know when you had said about, last time you got plenty of property over there, because the way my driveway, because look how long the driveway on the edges, it gets wet, because of water, the way they ground it, the water pitches off, and after a storm dis, I mean, it's pretty spongy out there.
Towards the front.
And again, just to put something there, would have to bring a lot of fill.
There's a reason we're called Lakeville. But you know, the discussion on water does raise a point. Do you plan any kind of control mechanisms off your big garage with the big roof? Are you gonna have gutters?
Yes, we are.
Were the, are you, the gutters will work good?
Those will be drained into the back, because if you look on, if you look on the drawings, it shows actually, the guy that I bought the house from, you see, it says the drain lines, if you look at the, on the bigger drawing, all the gutters right now are piped on the, they're on PVC, he put it on the ground, and it pumps into my behind, right behind the, like, probably 30 feet behind the leachion field, and it just seeps out into that area that's, and that would be the same thing, I would have the gutters on the roofs doing the same thing, on the left and the right.
It seems that when we have some heated discussions in these meetings, it's very often because a neighbor is concerned about runoff from the roof, or from a driveway, or from a, something that causes a problem.
Now, that would all be dumping into that back.
Is there anybody present who would like to speak for, or against, or oppose, or comment on this?
I'm the neighbor, Gollis McCarron. I live at 147 on the other side, and I'm for waters.
Thank you for your comment, sir. Anyone else? Good, thank you. So I think we're pretty much in agreement that the changes the gentleman is proposing to his plans are no more detrimental to the neighborhood or the environment than if he was in full compliance with the zoning, since it's only a three-foot intrusion into the setback. Somebody care to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion with the restriction that it does not set a new standard for the setbacks.
So we have, I'll explain in a minute. We have a motion made with the restriction that that three-foot intrusion does not define a new setback line. Is there a second to Dave's motion?
I'll take it.
Joe seconded. Any further discussion? Before I ask for a vote, I'll explain what that means. Normally, when there is a structure that is inside of a property line, excuse me, inside of a setback line, then on that one side of the property, it defines a new setback line. So if we did not have that restriction, that meant that you could now build anything 17 feet from the property line without having to come back to us. But the restriction that we're gonna put on the, if the motion carries, the restriction we put on your permit would say that if you wanted to build something that was 17, or 18, or 19 feet away from the property, on that property line, you'd still have to come back, and we'd have to reevaluate.
No plans for that, so I understand that.
Well, that's what that means.
Yep, thank you.
So we've discussed it, is there a vote, please? Who's in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. The carries. So your request for a special permit is approved. We have, we take typically 14 days to prepare the paperwork. Once it's submitted to town clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period. I wouldn't put a shovel in the ground until that appeal period is over. The packet will be mailed to you with instructions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lemlin?
How are you doing?
Are you, Mr. Lemlin?
Yes, I am.
Come on. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Master and Ross Chapter 48 is amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 21st, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Priest Street. Upon the petition of Sean Lemlin, he is requesting a special permit under Section 613 and 746 to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residence located on a pre-existing non-conforming lot as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. The property site is 31 Pilgrim Road and is owned by HAH Enterprises LLC. This is not your property, you're the contractor?
Yes.
And is the property owner here?
I represent the law.
Are you the one I talked to on the phone? Okay. Just by way of preface, I did call the property owner to ask that we clarify something that I thought I was missing, and it may be not be missing, on the drawings, which are kind of small from my eyes. This is the size of the drawings I was faced with. When we face some kind of an addition on a small lot, we'd like to have an indication of the percent of coverage, impervious coverage.
Yep.
And I didn't find it here, but it may just be that I couldn't see it.
The percentage of all the buildings is, it's like 16.80%.
Buildings and driveways, and anything that prevents percolation of water back into the...
Yeah, there's a shed, a carport, and the house structure.
Okay, so you're within the 25% of...
Yes.
I didn't see a plot, man. Do you have anything else I can...
I've had trouble, it's terrible. You need a magnifying glass to see it.
I'm okay, I gotta put my glasses on.
Thank you. The microstructure...
That's fantastic. And that is the miller addition spot. That should be the addition there.
What are you proposing to do?
It's just construct the addition for another bedroom.
For an additional bedroom.
Yes. It's a two-bedroom house.
There'll still be a two.
It'd still be a two-bedroom, so when I add any bedroom to it, it's just a matter of doing the actual addition to make the two of them a little bit bigger.
Okay.
Does anybody else want to? Don or...
No, I mean, I admit, I cut my magnifying glass out and looked at this as closely as I could. We're not concerned with setbacks, because this is...
It's, I think it's like 30 feet.
It's 30 feet, but it's not an issue. I mean, the house is, the house is closer.
Yeah. And it's being, I mean, we already went to the septic board and stuff like that, and they approved it, the septic, because we're gonna do it on some, it's not gonna be a board foundation.
And really, the only reason that you're here is because...
The size of the lot.
It's because it's a non-conforming lot. I have a March 18 memo from the Board of Health. It says, "The Board of Health has reviewed the petition for 31 Pilgrim Road to build a small addition on the pre-existing dwelling according to our records. This property has a recently approved septic system," parentheses, "March 6, 2019. Recently approved septic system and well plans. The dwelling will be restricted to two buildings with no increase in flow." We have a March 15 note from the Planning Board. At their Thursday, February 28, 2019, meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding this petition. And we have a March 8, oh, that's, sorry, that's the next hearing. Okay. So we're really not doing anything that concerns us very much.
No, not really.
You're here just because of the way that those bylaws are written?
Well, what I like about it is they're actually opening the front of the house up more.
Addition is to the front or the back?
The back of the house.
Yeah.
Yes, the back of the house.
Unless the back of the house, okay, well.
So you, if I understand it, you're going to extend this little tiny bedroom that's next to the bathroom?
Yes. Basically, I'll, I think it's another 12 feet, I think it is.
Yeah. Joe, comments?
I'm good with it.
David?
Looks good to me.
Janice?
I'm good.
I need to ask you, both you and the property owner, if you want to continue to finish this tonight, or wait until we have the full five members next month.
Here's, we're good. Finish it tonight.
Okay. Anybody present wish to speak for or against this?
It's only part of 35 Pilgrim Road, my backyard, but I just had a question. How close to the wall would be the end of the, the new addition?
Well, one would pass into the back of the house.
So would it be, so from the end of that new addition to the wall, would it be 10 feet? I also say, I'm in support. I'm the utter voter, fact that it's really close to my land, so...
If I had to make an educated guess, I would say you're 35 feet from the property line or something, so it's a pretty good distance.
Oh, my house, yeah, but my, my...
You're, you're... The actual wall to the property?
Yeah, the back, right at the back wall is my, is my, yeah.
You're, you're the butter on the rear?
Yeah.
And your name, sir?
Martin Eleven. I live at 35, and my life goes on behind.
Just for the record, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for or against? I hear none. Is there a motion, please?
Make a motion to accept the...
David is making a motion to approve the petition? Any restrictions on your motion?
No.
No restrictions? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Janice has seconded the motion. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. That means none opposed. Motion carries. You've heard it before, we have 14 days to finish our paperwork. There's a 20-day appeal period. At the end of the appeal period, you'll receive things in the mail. I wouldn't put a shovel in the ground until it's over, although I don't think there's much of a risk of appeal, but it's wise to wait.
Not a problem at all. I still gotta, I still gotta do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We finish Lemlin, we can open the Johnson hearing. Who is here for the Johnson hearing?
Aye.
And all these fine folks?
Yes, well, yes, we are.
Here for the, here for the show. "The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Master and Ross Chapter 48 is amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, March 21st, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Priest Street. Upon the petition of Ken Johnson, he is requesting a special permit under Section 613 to raise a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure and construct a new two-bedroom, single-family residence on a pre-existing non-conforming lot located in the business zone as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. The property site is 7 Rustic Drive and is owned by the estate of Mary J. Fuller." Jamie, are you presenting on behalf of the petition?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good evening, Jamie Bisnet, from Zingat Consulting Engineers, for the record. We have a special permit before you tonight to take down an existing two-bedroom, single-family lot and construct a new one on the lot. The lot is less than 20,000 square feet and also falls in a business district, so special permit to raise and reconstruct, or construct a new dwelling in its place is required. As part of our permitting process, we've been in front of the Board of Health and received approval on a Title V compliant septic system. That being said, we're here confirming tonight for approval, and are happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
This is over near, is it Loom Pond?
Yes, it is.
Private, on a private lane?
I believe Rustic is private.
Rustic Drive.
So this is Loom Pond, and this is where the property is? No, I printed it out, this is Loom Pond, this is the property itself, sure.
That's this, right here.
Yep.
Right here, yes, got it, thank you. And the property is, how big, Jamie?
7,000 square feet.
Got it, right here, yeah. Is there an existing structure there now?
Yes.
And would this have the same footprint as the existing structure?
I believe footprint is a little larger.
Are the setbacks...
Try twice.
Are the setbacks the same?
Actually, we are going back from Ivy a little bit, and we're getting further away from Rustic.
I got it, I see the house to be raised is very light here in the print.
Exactly.
Yeah. So you're going back, what, two tenths of a foot? Is that what I read?
We're going from, yeah, three tenths.
Two or three tenths of a foot?
Right in that ballpark.
So you, in that regard, you are going to be slightly more, I don't want to say more conforming, I'll say you're slightly less non-conforming.
Correct.
But not by a lot.
No, not by a lot.
Okay. And you're, however, you are going, the front setback is going from 15 feet to 30, almost 38 feet.
Well, you have Ivy Lane as a front setback, too. This is an odd lot, because it has frontage on three roads.
Which, yeah, but which, which of these is considered the front of the house? The address is Rustic Drive.
That's correct.
So wouldn't we consider the front, I mean, and that's where the porch, proposed porch is? So would that be the front setback, 37, 38 feet?
That's what I would consider the front setback.
So we're going, yeah, you're more than double the front setback. So once again, it doesn't quite conform, but it's a lot better than the previous one. And the rear is 20, a little over 20 feet, so you meet that. It's that side setback that doesn't meet, and the front is really close. But the side is a little better, by a hair. The size of the new house is about 25% bigger?
Um...
I don't have any dimensions on it, but we're just, yeah. Is the existing house living in now?
That I don't know.
How long has it been vacant?
No. No.
I have the hours.
The government.
It's lying around.
Can I ask a question? Did you say it was an existing two-bedroom? That, is that what the lot said that it is now? That's kind of curious.
It's three rooms.
Two, existing two bedrooms of the townhouse.
First one's listed.
Three rooms. Three rooms. And the porch is considered a room?
It, no, it's, what, the, the petition was advertised as stated a special permit to raise a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure.
Right.
And construct a new two-bedroom, single-family residence.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you had said that the existing structure was also considered a two-bedroom.
No, what's, what's there now?
It does say now.
Says it on the assessments records as well.
Yeah, and, and the Board of Health concurred on the septic repair.
Uh, our, our town says it's two bedrooms too.
Janice, can I borrow that picture for a second? I think I saw that somewhere.
There's a question on the board. I mean, how many two-bedroom rooms?
Oh my goodness.
That's a summer camp for one.
Yeah, well, that is.
What the assessors does.
It does assess, it will forget the assessors.
Now, that's pretty usual. Okay. It does, it does say a total of two bedrooms.
I feel like that's not.
What does it have for septic now?
Uh, I, I believe as a cesspool.
Kind of name for a septic. According to the town's tax record, it's considered a two-bedroom dwelling.
Did electricity.
The town is taxing. It's considering. What did you say it had, cesspool?
I, I believe the, the records are, are pretty scarce for that system. This is, this is what we were given. One, one of the sketches shows a tank, so that would be a septic tank in a, in a pit. But again, it's just a hand sketch.
Yeah, that, that goes back a long time, I'm sure.
Yep.
Does this plan include a new septic system?
It does, yep.
Does CBA, I mean, the Board of Health brought us a letter.
Yeah, I've got to read that. We have two letters. Let me, we'll, we'll come to you folks in a minute. I won't forget you. I, you won't let me forget you. We have a March eighth letter from the Board of Health that says, "The Board of Health has reviewed the petition for seven Rustic Drive to tear down the existing residential structure and construct a new one." According to our records, this property has a recently approved, February sixth, two thousand and nineteen, septic system and well plans. These are plans. Dwelling will be restricted to two bedrooms with no increase in flow. We have a March eighteenth memo from the Concom, Conservation Commission, says that to request the reference property was reviewed on March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. No wetlands or issues related to wetlands and the Wetland Protection Act were identified. And we have a March fifteenth memo from the Planning Board at their Thursday, March fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board has no comments regarding the above referenced petition. So the only people that really have, well, the Concom says there's no wetlands, that's good, and the Board of Health says that there are plans. Did you submit the plans?
You did.
Okay. For both the septic and well?
Correct.
Okay. And according to the town, they think what is there is a two-bedroom, is two-bedroom now, but I'm presuming that you're gonna, your plans are for a two-bedroom septic.
Yes. That, that's correct. It'll be a two-bedroom septic, leaching field with a septic tank.
So, we have quite an audience here tonight, apparently for either the amusement factor or for this petition. Who would like to speak for, against, or ask questions?
I guess I'll start. I live over on ten Rustic Drive from Jennifer Joel.
Your name again, please?
What? Jennifer Joel. And I just had a question. We, it's a dirt road currently, all the roads down there, no one has, there's no pavement.
I think they're private roads, probably.
Oh yeah, they are. I live, I live there, so, they are, and there's, there's a big drainage problems, like there, they stay wet, there's puddles, there's mud. My biggest concern, I think, is maybe not so much lot covered, I'm not sure, it probably meets the, I think it's twenty-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
It's a major problem because we just can't afford, we really can't have any more water. We have standing water. It kind of stretches out from the corner of Parsons, all the way down my driveway, it goes, it's a huge puddle, and it goes probably to the end of the Gomes property, almost, when it gets wet. And it stays wet for days and days, and it, so just to have more water entering that is probably a concern. I don't know if that's something that is addressed here, or, or would they would be willing to leave it a crushed stone driveway, so if water will?
Is, is the property owner here?
No.
Can you speak on behalf of the property owner with regard to the driveway?
I cannot, but I can ask. It just, I wouldn't be able to ask right now.
We can't see which way the driveway is tilting or anything?
Yeah, yeah, we, the plan does have topography on it, and it does pitch towards Rustic.
It does pitch, yeah.
And the other, and while we're talking about drainage, I mean, this, this came up, this comes up, you know very well, it comes up all the time. Do the plans for this new construction include control of runoff, off-the-roof gutters, dry wells?
There is nothing proposed on this plan for roof runoff.
We might keep that in mind.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Did we address your question?
Um.
You were concerned about the paved driveway.
Right.
And it, the, the owner's representative, Jamie will, Jamie Bissonette, will inquire with the owner if we could switch from a paved driveway to something that is permeable, not entropious.
Jen, would something like roof infiltration, taking, instead of swapping out the paved driveway, but infiltrating the roof itself into the ground?
I think that would probably, no, I think honestly the driveway is going to create just a mess, especially because it does pitch right down towards Rustic. It sits a little bit higher up than the, than the road, and I mean, my husband usually and then the guy here, you know, they spend, we, there's no association. So whatever gets done, it's sort of just done out of pocket of whoever can do it, and we just have this big equipment operator, you know, we have so many handy guys that live down there.
All right.
So we would, but it is a concern, like it's, you know, we're talking, it will go from a couple of hundred-dollar fix possibly to thousands of dollars, to, you know, as you have to resurface things and, you know, my.
Okay. I, I'll definitely bring this up with the element.
Thanks. Um, oh, sorry.
There was a lady in back there.
Yeah, well, my husband and I are the closest budders. Jamie and Concinhas, my husband Eli, we were at the Board of Health meeting, and our largest concern was the septic, which was going, the leaching field was going to be sixty-five feet from our shallow well. So we had quite a concern about that, and we had a lot of questions about the property, but we were told that we needed to come to this meeting to more understand what's being built. We don't know if it's two feet, two stories. We're not really, like, I haven't commented that, all the questions were deferred to this meeting for the zoning board to answer what it's going to look like, which, what the frontage is going to be out of your lane, is that?
I saw the, 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 somewhere I saw a plan, I don't have.
Yep. But they're small. I have a, I have a larger.
It's two-story.
It is two-story.
Okay. And it's how close to, out of us, twenty feet less than it?
This is annoying. Why did I, I must have misplaced them here.
From your property line is twel, they're both at twenty-point.
That's a lot.
Right now, it's, that house, the existing home is nearly seventy feet wide, so we're being encroached upon significantly with a two-story, I guess.
I can tell you that the proposed house looks a lot better than what's there now.
I know it's there now, yeah, but I think we were under the impression that whatever was built would be built on the existing footprint. That's, that's how it's been in that neighborhood, and we would not have thought otherwise.
The.
Especially with the well issue, there's been a lot of issues.
The, the change in location of the foundation of this new house is an improvement in terms of zoning, in terms of the bylaws, because the existing shack that's there now, I presume it's a ramshackle falling down shack, I don't know that, but it looks pretty tough. But that, that shack is very close to the front property line, much too close for our bylaws, and the new position they're proposing for this house is much more compliant with the bylaws. It doesn't quite meet them, but it's much closer.
I'm sorry, how close is it? It was like eight feet from Ivy Lane, is it?
It's about thirty-eight feet, thirty-seven and a half or thirty-eight feet from Rustic Drive.
From Rustic, but the, but the frontage would be on Ivy, which is eight.
Well, the porch, the address is Rustic and the porch faces Rustic, so I think we would consider that the front. And our bylaws call for a forty-foot front setback and twenty feet on the sides and the rear. And the rear is twenty and some inches, so they just, so this plan just meets the rear. The side setback on Ivy is a few inches better than the old house, not much, but it's a little bit. Certainly no worse, it's very slightly better.
And the twenty feet is to the depth, so the house is actually twenty feet and change.
So it's going to front Rustic?
And the driveway goes toward Rustic, so I would say Rustic is the front setback on this lot. This is not a bad-looking house.
So, I'm sorry, what was the square footage of the, the hall? Um, it's three-sixty-one now, and it's going to turn to.
It appears to be about six hundred square foot footprint, twenty-two by thirty.
Yep.
The footprint now, proposed.
Yep, twenty-two by thirty.
And it's two shorts.
So the, the footprint is about six, six hundred and sixty or so? Square feet?
So it'll be four times the size then?
No, no, it's.
With the two floors?
Well, it's the footprint we're concerned about.
Oh, okay, you only do one floor.
It's the footprint we're concerned about. It is bigger, but it's probably ten percent bigger if I look at this plan.
Yeah, the, the town has, with the enclosed porches, five hundred and thirteen square feet.
Five hundred and thirteen square feet versus six hundred and sixty, or six hundred and fifty?
Yeah, so maybe a twenty percent.
So it's a twenty percent increase. It's a little bigger.
Yeah, big question. Is that an enclosed porch?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't think so.
Doesn't look like it.
The plans show it to be open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Karen Quinn, I'm also a property owner at fifteen Rustic Drive. I know, what I've heard you say is this is not a bad-looking house.
Well, it's, you know, you're using, you, come on up.
Yes, no, no, and I, and I see it, and you're right, it's absolutely not, but I think it's also subjective to what the neighborhood looks like. What's there is a small little thing, I mean, it's, to us, it's historical because it was where Mary Fuller lived, and she didn't live there, it was a summer home, it was a summer dwelling. And it's almost like that was the nature of that area. You're taking a two-bedroom, year-round house and putting it into this area, it looks really nothing like a lot around it, and we're also talking about putting in a paved driveway. Not one thing is paved down there, no one has paved driveway. Road isn't paved down there.
He's going to address.
Yeah, and that, but I'm just bringing it up, there's, people park on the road there, so I think it's, it's just a, it's a stretch for what that property was originally intended for and what it was originally used for. So I guess we're trying to see the vision, and when you look from house to house, yes, okay, that might look better than this, but I think we have, we're also looking at it from the neighborhood standpoint and what kind of that charm of that neighborhood is, whether you agree with the charm or not, it's kind of what it is.
So I'm going to challenge you to do something for us.
Okay.
Would you find something in the bylaw that we can hang our hat on that addresses this issue? Aesthetics?
No, but I think, what you had just said, this is not a bad-looking house, and I agree it's not a bad-looking house, but I think a lot of the people here are concerned with the nature of what that neighborhood is. There's several properties for sale down there, so I think this sets a precedent as to what's going to happen down in that neighborhood, you know, is that ever going to be a town road now? It's going to be taken care of, so the car's going up and down it, can get up and down it.
Doubt it.
Yeah, so I think, I think that's where people are kind of trying to say, you know, I understand that things change, but at the same time, you know, when I bought a house in town, you know, one point six acres, you know, to build a house in town, and I know that's the bylaws because that's, but this is a very small property, it's going to be a lot of trees taken down and put in, and I think people have concerns as to what they're going to be looking at.
Does anybody have a non-conforming lot down there? Does anybody have a conforming lot, a large lot?
There may be one.
One in that home?
Down there, if I had to guess.
So most of you do have non-conforming lots, smaller lots?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I would guess that, I think some of the, you know, I can speak, I'm not sure, it's a change of use, like, it was a summer cottage, that was, that she lived in town, so even the amount of time she spent there wasn't a lot, it was a single woman who was there, you know, it's very sporadic, and so now we'll have somebody, you know, two bedrooms, so that's up to four people, like the septic, right, assuming two people per bedroom, and over there, you know, I'd be all the time, so it's just a different, it's definitely a different use of the property, probably a little bit more impactful, you know, and like I said, that's just, that's what we do.
Would anybody else care to speak for or against? Yes, sir, you were, you were lightning fast with your hand. I said you were lightning fast with your hand.
Any question? Has the lot been surveyed, or is this just going with town?
The lot has been surveyed.
Okay. And is it marked now?
Um, I'm not sure, the, I don't believe that has been stayed down.
When my lot was surveyed, it showed in the corner of my lot, out in the middle of Ivy Lane, and the reason being is when they, back in the early fifties, when they cut the lots, there was a nice tree there on there's property that they didn't want to take down for the road, so they cut the corner, they cut into my lot to, to bring Ivy Lane up the road, but now if the tree's coming down, do I get my portion of my lot back, or are they going to go with it?
Are you directly across the way? Yeah, so, yeah, it shows, it shows that the drive is coming right here across the front corner of your property.
Yep.
So, yeah, I, I agree that it does go across. Um, they, there's no, there's no, we're not planning on doing any cutting in the, in the right of way of here.
I know this isn't the Board of, the septic, but I'm wondering, now, if this, if this contaminates the lady right next door's well, is the town liable in any way in this, or?
This, this is a Board of Health issue, I don't think we can address that.
I know, that's what.
And I don't mean that we ignore it, I mean, we don't know enough to say anything intelligent.
Right. And the other thing, I was looking for the, they usually have two septic fields, like if one fails, where are they going to put the se- second one?
That's, that's all they do, that on new construction, on upgrades and repairs, you only have to show them.
And this is, I don't know, but, no, it's a two-bedroom, that house never had a bed, not even one bedroom, I think. Now, say if the town official came and no one answered the door, did they just automatically put two bedrooms?
I would, I would guess that that assessment was done before my lifetime.
Because there's never been two bedrooms, there's never been one, I already slept on the screen porch. There was never an enclosed porch, it was a screen porch, she slept out there. She never had water, she had water from the neighbor across the street, a hose over to her property.
I have a feeling no one here likes this plan.
No. No. It just seems like a big stretch to take this little thing and put in a, because on paper it says it has two bedrooms and it had a well at one point, and it had septic at one point, I don't, I think you look at it, you're like, what?
It's a huge trouble, they're going to be a skyscraper in our neighborhood.
It's just, it's kind of, it's kind of dwarfed out.
Seriously, the lot was a hose.
Exactly. That's what I wanted.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about the well. Has there been any kind of study as to how deep the well is going to be, or are they going to put down a well point that's going to fail like the other one did?
I think we would absolutely insist that they put a well and it fails.
I, I will address one thing, they do not do point wells anymore.
So what's going to, what's, what kind of well is going to be there?
Has to be, has to be a drilled well.
It'd be a deep well.
I used to.
I have a point, mine's fine. I'm lucky.
Mine, mine wasn't, so that's why I don't have one.
So, I'm sorry, do they have to hook, so they don't have to hook up the town water?
Well, they have a well permit, so I think the plan is for a well.
But if it just.
These, these issues around septic and water belong in the Board of Health, not to zoning. We're concerned with zoning, which is things like the setback from the property line, really.
I think we would absolutely insist that they put a well and it fails.
I will address one thing. They do not do point wells anymore.
So what's going to, what kind of wells going to be there?
Has to be, has to be a drilled well.
It'd be a deep well.
I used to...
I have a point, mine's fine. I'm lucky.
Mine, mine wasn't, so that's why I don't have one.
So, I'm sorry, do they have to hook, so they don't have to hook up the town water?
Well, they have a well permit, so I think the plan is for a well. These issues around septic and water belong in the Board of Health, not to zoning. We're concerned with zoning, which is things like the setback from the property line, really.
Can I just add one other thing? I sat here in the master plan meeting, that was this last Saturday, I think, with some other folks here as well. One of the things I kept hearing for people that have lived here their whole life is that Lakeville is changing so much, and we're changing the character of what made us Lakeville and what made us wonderful, our waterways, the small properties, we're bulldozing trees to put in developments, and I think that's why a lot of people feel strongly about this, is because...
I understand totally.
That's just one thing that...
When we moved in, there were 3,000 people in Lakeville.
And it's tough, when you've had generations here for years and years and years, and you've been going there for years and years and years. And we loved the homeowner that was there, like, you know.
What I didn't like was we lost power every week.
There was that. There was that. But, and we loved the homeowner there. And I guess, I think we were envisioning that, it was like, okay, you know, there'll be a tiny home there, or, you know, something. I mean, there's a trailer in one of the lots, because they were always told they could never build up. So I guess it's just shocking to see that on paper that conforms to everything.
This is going to happen more and more in this town, because it's a desirable place to live, because our taxes are low, and because we aren't building any more, we're not... Nobody is making any more buildable lots, so this is happening. The people are buying the, the lots that are somehow deficient and trying to put McMansions on them. This is not a McMansion, but believe me, we faced them before. This is happening, this is an issue. It makes it tough for us. But again, this is a zoning Board of Appeals. We handle issues around zoning concerns, not wells, not septic. And really not water either, that's the planning board. So, but we try very hard to address the issues in a way that makes sense for the property owner and the engineer who's faced with the design dilemmas that he's faced with.
And I appreciate you hearing this stuff, because we know this is an agir jurisdiction, it's just, we're not in, we weren't in those meetings, we don't even know that those happened first, so...
So what I've heard so far is a concern about the driveway that you're going to address with the... And runoff, which I think is a valid concern, that you're gonna address with the property owner to see if they consider some alternative driveway materials that would be permeable.
Impossible to, to root, you know, I don't know. I'm at a multiple. I have both of those notes already.
Now, keep in mind, but also keep in mind though, that the existing house is, or I should say, the new house is 10 or 15 or 20% larger than the existing house. So whatever the runoff is from the existing house, that's what you're living with now. And the new house is gonna have only a little bit more from its roof, because the roof will be as big as the footprint.
Right, but if we can, because it's a totally new construction, it's gonna be...
If he can convince the property owner to put gutters and dry wells in to absorb it, then it really helps the situation a lot.
Absolutely.
What other concerns do people here have that we can address in zoning?
I don't know if we can address this in zoning, but I have a question. In the past, there were trees between that home and our home. And they're very tall pine trees. Obviously, they're gonna get jostled while this construction and well, they've been going in. They're not very strong, we've had one come down, we've already replaced a roof and a skylight, and I would like that to not happen again.
My advice is take down every pine tree you can.
They're not ours. I guess, they belong to them. So one of the questions is...
My advice is take down every pine tree you can.
Sorry, but then we would like a buffer, obviously. We would not like to look at the back of a home then.
I took down...
We haven't looked at anything but trees.
I took down some 20 or 25 pine trees over the last few years of my property, and I was amazed at how many of them had the insides totally rotted out. The outside, they looked pretty good. One storm, windstorm, they would've come down. Take them down. They're wet, they're dirty.
But would they be a buffer zone then?
But we don't control trees here.
You don't have, would I have to replace the pine or something, or? No, we're just allowed, right now we have nothing but trees for 60 feet. We're gonna have a home on top of us, the trees are gonna be gone, we're gonna be looking at the back of a home. Period, end of story. Two-story home.
I don't disagree with you. I've been in a situation where I've, my property has been developed, actually somebody blasted next to my house. But the thing here with, I think you have to consider, you're saying these trees are on that property, and they have the right to take down.
True.
And I don't know where your house is, but do you have any trees on that side? Do you, do you have any trees?
We've taken quite a few down on our own.
You've taken...
And we need not put a claim in with that one, but now we're just going to have it again.
So, you know, maybe both of you could do something to alleviate that problem, I don't know. But I don't know how close your house is to that property line, is it very close?
Um, yes.
Right on.
It's right on the property line?
Well, it's close.
Pretty close.
Maybe like...
I don't think so.
They're all semi, I understand.
Yeah, they're all, I think they are all small lots there, yeah. So it's really hard once you put something in, it's not gonna disturb someone else a little bit, you know?
Well, sometimes when a builder builds and gets permission to get extra footage or yardage or whatever, it would heal, but they also requested to do other things that would be helpful.
I've known in the past that some builders will try to leave up some trees, but you're asking them to take down, really the pine trees.
So the questions, I think that you're gonna... The questions you're gonna take to the property owner concern the driveway, the runoff control from the roof. And you probably can convey to the owner the lively discussion over pine trees, but that's, that's not our purview at all. Pine trees, we don't do pine trees. Oak trees, yes, pine trees. Are there other comments or questions?
Can I have a question about the driveway? Where is that, and is that gonna be enough for the cars? Because there isn't a lot, you can't really park on the street there, the dirt road.
Sure. Yeah, the driveway is about 37 feet long, and it, yeah, it'll...
Is it the front?
It's off a rustic going to the side.
Come on up here for a second.
I have another question.
Here's rustic, here's Ivy, here's the proposed house, here's the proposed property.
Oh, okay, okay. So the house right now is like right there? Oh, yeah, right there.
Right there.
Yeah.
And so...
This is very...
So as far as work concerned, this house faces rustic, there's a porch, there's the driveway. It addresses rustic.
Yep.
So that's why we consider this the front of the house. And these planes. 7.6, 7.2 feet and 7.4 feet here. So as I said about 10 times, it's an improvement, even though it's a tiny, tiny improvement.
20 feet.
He doesn't have to enforce it here, because he only has a setback right here, 7.4. That's, that's what he, that's what he... That's what he wants to do, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, this is the issue, is that these were teen, tiny, but can't...
Well, it's, you know, well, it's, it's about the same.
Our shores, Churchill's. They sell, they come in, they're in town.
550 square feet, and this is a 670 square feet, so this is about 20%. But it's twice the size.
He's coming to build a big house, and I'm like, "No, I'm not."
I remind you, we still have a meeting going on, please. It's not a garden party yet. Sorry to be mean and nasty, but it devolved very quickly into less than a meeting. We have an open meeting, an open hearing. We have one more question before us, I think that we need to consider, and Jamie, this is a business, this is zone business.
It is.
So we do have to, of course, consider a dwelling in a business zone, which we've done many times. I think we can do that when we reconvene, probably next month? Can we continue to next month?
Before we do, somebody had brought up that they weren't aware there was gonna be a basement in the dwelling. I'm just letting, I mean, I know you understand that.
I didn't know that.
It's in the plan sets.
How does a basement affect the large shallow well, like 60 something? Go to hell. You go to learn how to pull a...
It, it won't.
But I didn't know there was a basement in that.
Can you address how a basement would affect the shallow well?
I don't know how it would.
I have a basement and a shallow well, doesn't affect me.
Is it very, is it close, like, is yours beyond the required amount does this?
My well is, my well is 23 feet deep, and I'm estimating that it's about 25 feet from the front of the house.
Well, 700 are, 100 are required?
No, that's...
No, no, that's between septic and well.
From the leaching field, I'm sorry, 100 from the leaching field, we're gonna be 70?
I think, I think you can go down to 50 with variance, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
But again, Board of Health. So we have one more issue to consider when we reconvene. You're gonna get some answers from the builder, and I think we need to continue to, what's our next?
April 16.
April 16.
It's a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yep, yep, yep. Yep, we have a conflict in scheduling, so we will meet April 16 on a Tuesday. Will that work for you?
We'll make it work.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the petitioner's request for continuance to next month?
So made.
Thank you for asking, Jamie. Who seconded?
I think Joe was going to...
Joe seconded.
Dave made the motion to accept the request for continuance to April 16. Joe has seconded. Any discussion here, none, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll see you on a Tuesday, not a Thursday.
Sounds good, thank you.
Have to make sure I change my calendar. So we will, we will continue this, this hearing on Tuesday, which is unusual for us, on Tuesday, April 16, here. Okay, let's see, I think we have a couple quick things to discuss, everyone received the mail. Roll set.
All right, can we ask just an informal question, it has nothing to do with this? Is that okay?
Sure.
Or just because you are zoning? Does anyone know the history of when this area, that area around there was business zone? Why is it business zone?
I could, I could find that out for you.
Just curious, because at that master meeting, I was looking at the building, you know?
Well, I think originally that was a campground.
Yeah.
Okay? And I think Gomes Campground, Gomes Campground was the business. Now, I live across the street, and I have six or eight lots, right?
Six.
Six lots. The Fowlers had like two lots, they were 25 by 50s, okay? So all of those things are, and that's why there's private lanes and roads there. And I think that's why it's called a business.
Okay.
Now, why did you need to know, what are you gonna have for next time? Because it's a business?
We, we have to have, we have to find that there's no disadvantage to having a home in a business zone, and I don't think that'll be difficult to do, but we need to find it.
Yeah.
It, it's just a requirement of the bylaw that if you wanna have a home, a dwelling in a business zone, we have to say it's okay.
But that's, that's the reason why this is such a broken up lot, because it's like three lots.
I think it's existing residential. I think you'd have to, since it's already existing residential, carry on that.
It's the way they did it.
That's the history lesson for today.
Would they ever consider, or would there ever be a reason to make it residential again? Or is that like a, what's its business is?
That would have to be town meeting.
No, I'm just curious.
It would have, you'd have to get a petition to go to town meeting.
Okay, if it changes zoning from...
Yeah, but avoid, but be careful to avoid spot zoning.
Yes.
You got two, two lawsuits, appeals?
I think I got one.
There are two. And then there's a carbon copy from November.
Oh, yes.
Which I just gave it like yesterday or two days ago.
I don't know which, who's doing who, I mean, some other... The planning board, who's, no, it's this board. There's another one that we're on, right?
What?
Besides the hospital? Isn't it somebody else? Isn't there another one who's going?
Is the, oh, the one with the front of?
I don't know what Janice is talking about, I'm lost. Janice, what are you talking about?
I thought, I got a notice for another lawsuit.
Eight, 10 meetings adjourned. Oh, I just wanted to, to make sure people have received...
But then again, I could've missed my mailbox.
All right. Speak carefully to John.
Sorry?
Speak carefully to John.
John, I said, I, I did. And he said, "I never miss more, I never miss two meetings." But this is your third in a row.
He said what?
He couldn't help it, he'll be there. He's, he's not getting off, he just couldn't be here.
Wow.
I don't know, I can't...
I'm sure it's not frivolous, but he's not here.
No, he's not.
So you can...
I did.
Tell him that you're gonna threaten to tell the selectmen that he's missed three hours.
I'm not threatening.
He'll, he'll take it and give you a...
I think he, I mean, I did ask, I mean, he tends to intend to come next meeting. He tends to, and the next, just tell him.
So my, my opinion on the appeals, which I have already expressed to you, my opinion on the appeal is it's between the developer and the cities.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. And if you remember, the developer was so impatient to get going that he wouldn't wait until the next month's meeting, we had to have a special meeting. Yep?
Yeah.
And so I think this delay, if you looked at the, did you look at the schedule? You didn't get the November one, but they gave a schedule that the decision wouldn't be for at least, was it two years or three years?
Yeah, one is gonna be in 20, in 21, the other one's gonna be in 22.
Yeah, so the decision would be way, way out.
Way out.
So my guess is that Deli Prescoli will drop this like a hot potato in about 20 minutes from now. That's my guess. I think the other, the other question is, what can be done with various boards, committees, agencies, towns, and cities to come up with funding, or even maybe with the state's help, and maybe Audubon's help, to buy the property?
Audubon didn't want it, that's what she said.
Well, Audubon didn't want it, but maybe in partnership they might, they might...
Yeah, that's a possibility.
You never know.
Yeah. As long as it doesn't cost the town the way Google stacks pays any day in a lot.
Well, how much should we pay for Ted Williams' camp?
That came out of, find this one content from the...
How much should we pay for Ted Williams' camp?
Yeah.
Ted Williams' camp we're using.
Yeah, but Ted Williams' camp was staying for a long while.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, I, I think we adjourned. Okay.